Council for finishing off our the last fiscal year successfully and respectfully. I'd like to call the meeting to order at nine oh three AM and call upon our vice chairman to say a prayer today.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Alright. Our heavenly father, we come to you today and thanks and gratitude for the many blessings that you place into our lives each and every day through your grace. Thank you for being with us every day for providing in all the many ways that you do. We ask that you be with us as we discuss the affairs of our tribe. We ask that you be with those that are in need of you and that are in mourning. We ask that you be with our soldiers in the four directions and we ask that you be with our tribal members again today. Thank you, Lord, for all the many blessings that you provide and we say these things in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brian. We have an agenda before us, council. We had some tabled items. We had some new business. Are there any further additions to our agenda? Lorelei.
Madam Chair, we need to add under the five signature, the Winnebago Surveillance Project that was approved by five signature.
Thank you, Brian.
I saw the draft agenda and there were tribal council items that said B C. I don't, is that me?
No, it's supposed to be, I think that's supposed to be Brian Mathers. I saw that as well.
Yeah, those aren't mine.
The other correction, thank you for bringing that up, Brian, under two, it's it's actually not the the half plan. I, well, I guess the half plan does need to be updated, but the other one was the was the quarantine housing plan needed updates. If that's not ready, we don't have to do that today. I just, we had tabled that from the last meeting. Okay, any further additions?
Yeah, I have a correction.
Okay.
To the minutes that were approved and printed in the one big, in the news, it was the meeting that we had regarding Winnebago and the general manager. It showed me as present. I was not.
Okay. We can do that during the minutes, but they were already posted, you're saying?
Yeah, they were published in the in the wind and it said, showed me as present and I was not.
Brian, you made some motions there and objected to some motions.
I, that's not possible because I wasn't in that meeting at all.
You nominated somebody and then you objected to other motions, so you were in that meeting.
No, this is the one that you guys had with the general manager.
Okay, well, we'll we'll clear that up and thank you for bringing that to our attention, Brian. Are there any further additions to the agenda?
Let's call it. I have a housing update for council. We're going to executive session in eighteen.
Would you like that as part of that?
Yeah, I just wanted to know that.
All right, any further additions? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Brian. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Eric, discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried, is it six zero zero? I'm looking at the attendees, six zero zero. Or seven zero zero, we got Louis on. So the only person we're missing is is down, I think, okay, seven zero zero. Okay, first order of business, we have our packet of minutes, September thirteen twenty twenty one land meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes? Do we have a motion for the September thirteenth twenty twenty one land meeting?
I'll make that motion.
We got a motion by Coley. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Second by Rona. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried seven zero zero. Our second set of minutes are the September twentieth twenty twenty one mid-monthly meeting minutes. Is there a motion? Motion by Eric, do we have a second?
Okay.
Second by Rona, discussion. Objection to the motion. Third set of minutes are the October first treasures report.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Coley, do we have a second? Second. Eric, discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried seven zero zero. Under our ratified five signatures, the first one is approval of the American Rescue Plan Children's Code Project and the purchase of the one thousand three hundred and seventy-two Visa gift cards and those are in the amount of one hundred dollars. And I'd also like to thank Coley again for his suggestion to do that. We appreciate thinking of the kids. Is there a motion to ratify?
Motion to ratify.
We have a motion by Eric. Do we have a second? Brian, discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried seven zero zero. The second one is to adopt resolution point one forty-five tribal enrollment emergency app, emergency enrollment. Is there a motion to adopt or ratify the five signature?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we got Coley on the motion. Brian, you want Brian on the second?
Yeah.
Question. Motion carried seven zero zero. The third one is the Winnebago Tribal Surveillance Project Ratification. Is there a motion?
Would you say again?
Is the Surveillance Project Ratification looking for, okay, yes. Motion by Rona, second.
Second.
Second by Eric, discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried seven zero zero. Under new business, we have Indigenous Peoples' Day event and sometime now, the Indian Commission and the four tribes have been working to plan the first Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's going to take place on October eleventh in Lincoln, Nebraska, and a part of that day will be, it'll start at nine AM with a flag dedication ceremony there. The tribes will have an opportunity to bring their flag in, have, will have a flag song. I hope to have a applique exhibition. The chairs will have an opportunity to speak. From there, there'll be a reception. The next event is the Dr. Susan LaFlesh dedication statue and the unveiling of it and then, and so there'll be some programming by the Omaha at that time and a dance exhibition. And then there'll be a lunch. And then the third activity for the day is the there's a dinner in the evening. And so there's different programming throughout the day and the tribes have been asked to contribute in a way that they think would be meaningful and that they would want to share song or dance or anything like that. So I put together a request for the council. That's not it.
In Korea.
Yes.
I've been on, but they don't get any picture.
Um. Um, do I share my screen, Garen? So I, the radio, we did a request that had opportunity for the council to go down the night before. Otherwise, the event starts at nine AM and so folks would have to leave in the morning. The Winnebago Color Guard, I wanted to offer them mileage and honorarium. Eric has been working with the veterans and trying to identify the representatives that would be available. If at the minimum, and ladies aren't able to come, then I'd ask Eric if he would carry our travel flag. I've reached out to New Breed and they're willing to serve in that capacity. And so I didn't give them any numbers. I don't know if this is even enough. I'm just trying to put something up for the council for consideration. We could perhaps pay more for the drum because it is a commitment and one thing that I I've learned and what has been told to me is that no celebrations take place, nothing, no dancing takes place without that drum and that we really need to be thinking of it in that way. So I I'm hoping that maybe we could have more than fifty dollars a singer. The next one is that we're, we would be honored to have our Winnebago princesses represent us and accompany us as our dignitaries. We have two Harvest Celebration Princesses and we have two annual homecoming celebration princesses. I wanted to be able to offer those young ladies an honorarium as well as their parents' gas money to go down. The next thing in here is the appliqued. I had originally thought it'd be nice to have as many dancers as we we could get down there, but it is a school day, it is a work day. So it was suggested that perhaps we just have our dignitary royalty dance and exhibition applique. So if that was, then the applique dancer, this would go away. There was a question a few weeks ago about motor coach buses for the, one of the football games. And at that time I asked Teresa if she would also get some prices for if we were to go to Lincoln. And with the somewhat surge in the community, I don't know if if that's still the feeling that we would want to hungry on a coach bus. So that that discussion had happened previous to some of the the positives we've had lately. Then the last thing we have on here are question to give gifts to the two representatives that sponsored the bill for Indigenous Peoples' Day. And that would be Senator Brewer and the 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 second name slips my mind. It's it's a lady. Those are just, I want to open it up for feedback, Brian.
Madam Chair, in a unrelated conversation that we had with our lobbyist, they advised us to stay away from any gift giving for the senators simply because there are state statutes in relation to what they can and can't receive. He said it's more of a headache than it's worth. He said they appreciate the the offer. He said by all means, tell them thank you, but the actual gift giving under the advice of the lobbyist, he said, stay away from it.
Okay, that is excellent feedback. Thank you, Brian, for that. And so this budget, you know, as you can see, it's estimated at over thirteen thousand dollars. And there's certainly ways that we can reduce this budget. We 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 don't have to do the buses. We could eliminate thirty-six hundred if we only stick with our royalty. Maybe all the council are, don't need to go down the night before. Maybe they they're early risers and they want to leave by six thirty. The color guard, this may change with the number of representatives Eric gets a commitment, a confirm confirmation from. So this is just out the gate, what I put together and I'm just looking for feedback. If this is the direction the council's looking for, if we want to cut this in half, the funding source to answer this would be through some of the tiers act money, the BIA for tribal governments allotment and our allocation and we have I believe twenty-something thousand and, was it twenty-three or twenty-six? I spoke to Alan on Friday. So that's available to use towards this celebration and that's all I got. Would you guys like, so I guess the first question is, do we want to not do the buses? Is that something we want to back off from, Eric?
Yes, I would agree with probably canceling the charter buses and the applique dancers. As you said, it's a school day. We've got the COVID numbers that are kind of starting to stack up. And just for safety purposes, I I think that would be a good measure to take. Otherwise, I agree with everything else that's been shown to us this morning. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Eric, for that feedback. By taking those two items away, it brings it down to an estimated seventy-six hundred, seven thousand six hundred and nineteen. Place where I think there's, I'm looking for some feedback from our gentleman. It's, that's we would like more for the drum. Hey, Eric, can you mute your phone, please? Okay, I want to invite John to comment on the drum. John, I know it's always a blessing to be asked. But I just want to make sure that we're respectful to those who are asking to travel to Lincoln.
Okay, yeah. Um, I think obviously, I think the honorarium is appropriate and we do need the drums. I know we want to provide a adequate honorarium, understanding that we it does cost money to go, it costs time and maybe people will be taking time off from their jobs. So I believe a more appropriate honorarium would be maybe a hundred dollars per singer that that can make it. I think that would help them along a little, a little better for what they would do. Hello, Tori, do you hear me?
Oh, yep, I hear you. Thank you for that feedback. That's, I think, is a respectful honorarium. If we don't have ten guys, perhaps it'll be seven or eight. You know, I think New Breed would have more accurate number on their confirmed singers, Lorelei.
I'm sure I'm all ready to approve this.
Good morning, Mike.
With the suggestions that were were made, take out the buses and add more money to the drum group's honorarium. I'm ready to approve this.
Okay, thank you, Lorelei. Before you make your motion, is there any other feedback from the council? Rona?
They're talking about, do we have veterans princesses?
Aaron.
We talked about harvest and homecoming celebration. What about the veterans?
I I mean to overlook them. So let me just, so that is probably six then, Rona?
Yeah, if they have them. And the other suggestion would be no hotels.
Okay.
Everybody, everybody treated the same straight through mileage.
Okay. So what, one thing that, so thank you for that feedback, but the one comment that I that I was trying to to your point, when I was putting this together, when a tribal employee or a tribal council travels, they there's things like mileage imperium included. And although all the meals are provided at this day's event, I didn't know if that was something that you wanted extended to the princesses. Going back to the point is I don't want to assume that somebody has money to feed their family on the road. So, but to your point, I just didn't know which direction to go with that because if they're not an employee and those things aren't automatically provided to them.
Thanks, thanks for, you know, putting everything in there. So, you know, so everybody can see the bigger picture and then how much that we, you know, we're willing to do. Um, it is a large budget for a day activity. It's for a good cause, but you know, we have a lot of stuff going on in the community now that we could be using this money for.
All right, thank you. So I took that item out. Any other feedback? All right, Lorelei, is that still pleasing?
Yes, I'm ready to make a motion to approve this. And also included in my motion besides this budget, revised budget is that our chairwoman will speak for us at the event.
Oh, thank you, Lorelei. So we have a motion by Lorelei to approve the Indigenous Peoples' Day budget that includes the princesses, the mileage for the princesses, council color guard, drum group. In addition, the honorariums as noted for the drum group color garden princesses. Do we have a second? Second by Louis, discussion.
Discussion. I'm sorry, I guess it didn't, it don't need to be in his budget, but is, our communications, they're going to go and have this provided on a big screen. The notification to the people that it will be streamed.
I think that's an excellent recommendation, Coley. Would we like to add something in here to sponsor communications attending because it might not be in their budget to attend?
Yes, add them. Please, in my motion.
Okay, and to conclude communications, okay, thank you, Coley.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm not opposed to that in any way, but oftentimes when there are events like this, especially at the Capitol, there is oftentimes a state-sponsored communication already happening. So it's quite possible they might already be doing something.
Okay, wonderful. We can have Garen circle back with them and see what's even allowable. They'll probably have to get press pass and and things like that. So excellent point. Any further discussion? Any objection to the motion? Motion carried seven zero zero. Okay, thank you, council. Our next item, I would like to invite Brian Mathers to present the Winnebago Housing and Financial Services Market Study.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Wow, I've lost my voice already. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to visit with you this morning. We just recently had completed this pretty comprehensive market study, market analysis of the housing market and the financial services market for Winnebago, the broader reservation. Many times we need this type of information for grant proposals to establish need. It kind of helps us also plan our programming so it's as responsive as possible to, you know, the current situation in the community. And one of the key findings preliminary from the, from the study was that a lot of people in the community are not really clear about who we are and what we do at HCCDC. So I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about just some of the key findings from the study and kind of update the council on how some of our programming is evolving to be responsive to some of these emerging needs in the community. So I did send out to you guys copy of the full study. It's long, it's over a hundred pages, but I thought it might be something you might want to reference at some point. And of course, I did share it with the planning department and HCI and the Housing Development Commission because we all use this type of information in our collaborative works. Is there a way for me to screen share? Or do you have the slideshow that I sent, Brian?
We can screen share.
Okay. Let's do that. Can you guys see this?
Yes.
All right, great. So this is part of what's confusing about who we are is that we're really two nonprofits. We're Ho-Chan Community Development Corporation, which is a nonprofit that is broadly focused on community development in Winnebago and the reservation. And we do a lot of what I call hub work in the community, meaning that we'll partner with the tribe, tribal departments, HCI, the tribal college, the school on projects. And we're usually a source for helping to plan, maybe do some grant writing or fundraising. Sometimes we act as an entity that will actually operate the project, but more more times than not, we're just helping with the proposal and maybe the grant administration and then the funds are passed through to tribal program or a community partner like HCI for the infrastructure development work or the tribal college for some of their work or the schools. We helped support the academy for the last few years of summer grant work. So we're kind of, we never look the same year to year. Our project portfolio kind of evolves. Currently, our operating budget is about two point six million dollars and more than eighty percent of that is passed through to community projects. And most of our focus at Ho-Chan Community Development Corporation is on developing affordable housing. I'm helping build out the infrastructure for streets and roads so that there's more places to build, a workforce development, you know, job training, some education programs, food sovereignty. The tribe asked us to kind of take the lead on coordinating food sovereignty stuff a few years ago, so we're involved in that aspect as well. And then just general quality of life things, things like prevention programs, cultural things, those types of grant projects. So that's HCCDC. And the other nonprofit that we're doing, that that our organization does administrative work for is a CDFI, which is a community development financial institution. It's a separate legal entity with a separate board. And they were just, they're a much more recent organization. They've been around for about six years. We have been certified as a CDFI by the Treasury Department. That was quite a process to get that done. We are certified. And there, it's a smaller organization. Their annual operating budget is about half a million dollars a year right now. We don't actually have staff. We have contract workers working under Ho-Chan Community Capital or the CDFI. And then our finance manager and myself provide the administrative oversight for that organization and write their grants and keep them current with their certification and things like that. But the projects that our contractors are working within the community are financial literacy and credit coaching for folks. We have a personal lending program. People can do grants or debt consolidation loans or just other types of personal lending or to establish or protect their credit. And then we do small business lending and technical assistance to startups, expansions for small businesses. We have some loan capital that we can get out there. And then we're helping with homeownership. So we are helping to administer the tribe's down payment assistance program. That's done through our CDFI. Because that way, if some of those potential home buyers need help getting their credit in shape to qualify for a mortgage, we can do that step first and then get them ready to become homeowners. So we took on this study. We commissioned the OUISTO organization, which is a nationwide Native American community group to do this study. And we we financed the study with a grant from the Winnebago Community Development Fund and also the Sherwood Foundation. And it was really just done so that we could get current information that would help in our partnering and in our fundraising for projects here. And really in our strategic planning to help tailor our projects to what's most needed. And so that was done earlier this year between April and September. They surveyed one hundred and thirty-six respondents to the survey that was sent out. It's a little bit skewed because it was online and we know that that leaves out, you know, people that don't have access or aren't amiable really to online surveys. But that was a pretty good representation, we thought. And then they also called and did personal one-on-one interviews with community stakeholders. And then OUISTO also just looks at the current census data, other publicly available data about our community and our service area. And then they kind of put this all together with key findings and make recommendations for our programming around housing and financial services. So here's some of the key findings that emerged from the study. So here's some of the key findings that emerged from the study. One is that families in Winnebago and on the reservation are really looking for large houses. They're especially wanting to have like four bedroom, two bathrooms at least, and they're really looking for bigger single-family homes. They want to be home buyers or they want to rent homes that big. And there's a real shortage of that according to the data. You can see the underlying depth that supports these findings in the study. If you ever get a chance to do that or if you have any questions about any of that, I'm happy to follow up with that as well. So the programming that we're kind of working on to help meet that need, that need that families have for bigger houses and buying single-family homes is helping to administer the tribe's down payment assistance program, which is just, let me just say, that's fantastic program. It's been incredibly helpful to families. 65, I think we're over 65 now, homes that have been built on the reservation since you instituted that down payment assistance program. So that's a lot of housing stock to be added and that's lots of families that have become homeowners as a result of that program. And then we're also doing the credit building and the loans to help people establish good credit so that they can qualify for a mortgage. And then we're also partnering with HCI and the Winnebago Housing and Development Commission to extend infrastructure and to construct new homes so that they're ready and available for those families once they're ready to purchase them. And that's the gamut. That's both single-family homes and apartments and duplexes and triplexes and things like that. And then something new that I wanted to be aware of is we just got funding from the Sherwood Foundation to help. Some of these families can't quite qualify for the size of mortgage that would take to to construct a new home, even with the down payment assistance. That's quite a bit of debt to take on. So some people can't quite fill that gap, so we're going to be able to help those families that are kind of on the borderline there of affordability to set up these matched savings accounts where the grant will match four to one, any part of their income that they can save towards this home purchase. So if they can save $4,000, the grant would put in four times that amount, which is $16,000, and they'd have $20,000 to add on to their down payment assistance to help them close that gap. So it's meant to help people kind of, you know, establish savings and good savings habits, and then it's a motivation to help them close that gap so that they can afford the home. So we're really excited about getting this match savings account program started. We think that's going to start right after the first of the year. We just found out that Sherwood Foundation is funding that, so we're excited about that.
Excuse me, Brian? Could, isn't, we can move or maybe my screen just, I'm only seeing half the presentation. Maybe is it my Zoom percentage? Do you guys see the full screen?
No, I've got it. I'll, I can change that. I've just got that on a different, I'll need to just change the slideshow here. See if that helps. Is that better?
It was before you did whatever you just did. Now it's too big.
Okay, let's see here.
Like yours. You can see your full slide now. Yeah.
Okay. So, oh wait, here's the second one. Educational attainment, household earnings are disproportionately lower for our native youth, according to some of the public data and the survey data that's summarized in the study. And it made very strong recommendations in the study that we should start financial education early while kids are still in school. So we are working on with some partners to kind of meet that need. Part of that is that new apprenticeship program that the public schools and HCI and the tribe's education department are putting together. So we're going to participate in that as well. And we've just got new funding from the Native American Ag Agriculture Fund to start a youth initiative that will fund these apprenticeship for five juniors and seniors every year. They'll be, they need to, since it's funding from the Native American Ag Fund, they have to be in food or ag-related placements. But they'll pay for them. I think it's $9 an hour that they get paid while they're in there. And also they'll, it'll pay for their summer youth work and they're going to be helping administer the farmer's market next year and the home gardening program, Bagel Grows, and engaging other community youth in food and egg projects. And then they're also going to have the matched savings accounts for these youth. Not to buy a home, but to, since they're juniors and seniors, they could, and theirs isn't as, doesn't have as much money in it, but they could also then over, over a year, they could save a couple of thousand dollars with this match contribution so that they could have it to offset some of their school costs or if they're ready to, you know, start a business or do something else when they graduate that they could use those funds for. It just has to be some sort of capital asset purchase that they, that they use it for. So we'll be able to start that savings accounts for youth and kind of do that financial education early with them as a way to respond to that identified need. Okay. One more here. So the other thing we saw is that there is a lot of interest in entrepreneurship in the public community. Lots of people have ideas about starting a small business, all kinds of things. People talked about. They listed different types of business ideas that they had. It all seemed pretty viable. So we're gearing up programming to respond to that. We've been doing that, but we have actually quite a bit of capital to lend out that goes unloaned to, for small businesses. So we're trying to increase that pipeline and have people feel comfortable and kind of taking the leap and launching their project ideas. Just kind of get some of that economic development going in that way. So we have about a quarter of a million dollars right now that we can loan out for startups and expansions. We'll continue the farmer's market coordination to help those entrepreneurs. We're doing workshops and seminars. We partner with technical assistance providers for that, Wake Forest School of Law and Brighter Cliff. I know we still all do those, either virtually or outside the pandemic, we'll do those. We'll have in-person seminars, we'll continue those. And something new along responsive to this need is that the tribe has authorized our CDFI to apply on their behalf for the state small business credit initiative that's part of the pandemic response funding from the government. That will be about three quarters of a million dollars that will be available for that. And that can be used for venture capital, expanded business lending. We're kind of strategizing. We don't know exactly what we're going to apply for, for that. We're trying to, we're sifting through this community need study to, to fine tune our concept about that a little bit. So really what's next for the study is we're digging through it, we're analyzing some of the findings. Then we're sharing with key partners that could also use it in their planning and their strategic work. And I'm offering to come out and do tailored presentations to any of the groups. We've got ones on the schedule already with the planning department so that they'll have access to all the information and we can kind of plan together on initiatives that might respond to some of the findings. So that's where we're at with that. A really key thing was that we need to get out there and be in the community and let people know what we're doing so that they understand what, how we can partner more and do more with them. We're ready to go and we do enjoy the partnership work here. One things I wanted to update you though, real quick too, is some things that we're already doing with the tribe, which is the Community Development Fund. We have a cycle of that every quarter and we solicit applications every quarter and I do an online training for the potential applicants every quarter. And we just got, that says 200, but it should be $200,000 grant from Sherwood Foundation to supplement the Community Development Fund. So we're going to have more money in there to give out and we're going to, I'm going to really push people to know that that additional funding is there for community projects and they can apply for higher dollar amounts if they have the project need. Down payment assistance is still going strong. We have about 20 applications in that pipeline and we're doing the new match savings accounts out for affordability for those families that couldn't quite make that threshold before. And we continue to coordinate closely with the tribe's planning department. ICBG roles going back and forth, who applies, who's the project administrator, all that stuff, all the grant writing backup. Sometimes Joyce Grant writers are full when an opportunity comes out and she'll call us and ask us to help with that and we're happy to fill in and help those things. Or sometimes it's more helpful for us to be the project administrator for a grant that's being proposed. We're happy to take on that role too. So thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any other information if I can.
Thanks, Brian, for that presentation. I was really anxious when he told us that you were going to be doing this over the summer. And one thing that we've talked about at the council seems like lately is rent to own. Did anything emerge from the feedback on tribal members wanting rent to own?
You know, I'll look, Tori. I don't remember that specifically, but I think that was talked about maybe just in some of the individual responses to the interviews. So I'll go through and see what's in there.
And so when we're thinking of rent to own, I'm not sure what, if, if it's the commitment that's attracting or if it maybe that it's more in a price point. So I, one thing that I would, I guess, ask if, if it's in the, in the data or if we could put something together that answers this question through, you know, what you guys are already doing. On if that savings match will bring a level of confidence to our future homeowners. And I, to me, I always, and for even myself, I guess I'm just speaking that it, it's, the commitment is carried and then thinking if you'll be able to afford it. And so that's why I say the confidence.
Yeah. And I, it is, it is a long-term commitment and some risk for sure.
Is there opportunity for any partnerships with some of our clients and some of our human services programs that this could be added to maybe their, their plan that they're working towards?
The match savings account things?
Yes. Like how will you recruit that?
Yeah, we're just going to make it available to anyone, you know, that's interested in, that's tribal member, that's interested in becoming a home buyer.
I'm just, right.
The only, the only requirement, Tori, is it has to be earned income, so they have to be working.
Yes, so some of our ten of clients, they are working and most recently they were really incentivized further because some of this federal dollars that are coming through that, that I don't want to say rewarded, but it, they had further assistance. So those ones that had a job, I was really happy to see them get a little extra help. But with that, many clients in some of those programs have case plans and work plans and maybe it's that they finish their GED or something. And so it would be really encouraging at the end of those plans as they're building stability is they be thinking of this and that there's an opportunity for them with this savings and match program that could really take them into their next stage of life, I guess is what I'm trying to say, and that there's hope built into this plan.
That's, yeah, that's exactly what those programs are for. And so we'll, once we get the official release of funds from the foundation, we'll do, I'll, I'll call Shiara and we can go do a presentation for them because that would be a good target group to, to reach out to for that. But we'll do those around the community because they're a little confusing to people that understand how they work and stuff. So we know we're going to have to do some outreach and and do some focus groups and studies and presentations to get the opportunity out there in the community for the population that can benefit from it.
Thank you for answering my questions, Lorelei.
Brian, many of our people, they're, they don't have the, the good credit. To be able to, to get a mortgage. But I, I, I'm hoping that we have room for rent to own. Where in that time they can earn credit. Because a lot of our people can't get, you know, they, they can't get mortgages. And they're the ones that need housing really bad. So I'm hoping that we have a rent to own option for them where that could be structured in such a way as, as they they build credit.
That's right. I think so far it's just the, the Winnebago Housing and Development Commission that does the rent to own, right? There's, I think they're the only ones that have done that.
Well, why can't we think about it?
We could. We sure could. Yeah. And it could even be tied to one of these, you know, match savings account things. We wrote the Sherwood proposal as a two-year grant as a pilot, hopeful that we can show the proof of concept that it works and then they would be interested in funding a larger initiative. So we can take it and customize it to different populations, like you said. Another thing that can, we can, they could use their match savings accounts to qualify to, for instance, pay off their debt or, you know, consolidate their debt or whatever. That's one of the allowable uses of it to qualify for the mortgage. So yeah, there's lots of ways that could work, I think.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have any further questions, Eric?
How many, how many workers are going to be working at this Ho-Chung Community Capital?
There's just two contractors there.
Okay. That, you know, a lot of our tribal members, they some of them can afford those, those bigger houses that are over 100,000, 200,000. But there's probably more of our community members that make less than $1,000 a month. And so we, I would be inclined to say a direction to go would be a ranch house, maybe a small two or three bedroom. A lot of our tribal members just need a place to live. And, you know, you're talking about partnering with tribal programs. I think something positive would be, you know, our housing. Since I've been on council, our housing hasn't really done anything or too much with opening up a lot of these boarded up houses that we have. We have a elder and a few young gentlemen that, that the elder that's working there is one that knows things. The young guys don't know too much. They, they have you know, strong hands and a lot of energy, but they kind of don't know the technical stuff on, on how to do that. And so we've been trying to make it go as fast as we can, but we can only go so fast and you know, we have the, we have winter coming. And I would say that would be a, a good direction to go would be talk to housing and, and help them open up some of these houses that have been boarded up for a year, two years, three years. And that would be a quicker fix and then, then trying to build a house. And these, these smaller houses would be more adequate for the financial ability to a lot of our tribal members. I guess a lot of them make less than $1,000 a month. And these, these are even families, single parents with children, whatever it might be. And so that's, that's where I'd say would be a good start for the people to, to open up these houses and then knowing that they're already pretty small, I think that would be more financially beneficial to everybody all the way around. Thank you.
Eric, do you think that those houses, it would make sense to rehab them then for rental or for more affordable purchase option?
I would just say rental because a lot of our tribal members, they, they live very dynamic lives and they, they, you know, sometimes they can't get jobs here. Sometimes they want to come back home. That when they come back home, they can't get jobs and they, they have to move to the city. Or sometimes they lose a job and they can't pay that and then they have to move in with a relative or a friend or something to that extent. So I would just say for rental. Because like I said, that the dynamics of a lot of our enrolled memberships lives there, they, they, they come and they go and, and the ones that stay will state opening options up for a bigger, longer running option of maybe a homeownership of $100,000. But there are a lot of our membership, they're young, they're young, a lot of them are elders. So that's just. So that's just kind of the low and the high ends that we have to keep in mind because those are the ones that were, they're going to be coming up after us, the ones that that could really, that got us to where we're at, that we need to take care of them. So that's kind of where I'd like to go with that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that definitely comes out in the study is that you get this idea that there are sort of, there's a, there's a pretty good sized gap because of the, how the new housing is being developed is, is as Eric said, it's quite expensive for first time home buyers especially, or people that are just starting out or people that are retiring. And that there's, there's a real, and then on the other end of the spectrum, we have the low income tax credits where they have to be low income to qualify for it. But there's quite a large group of unserved community households that are, can't, are, make too much to qualify for the low income housing and don't make enough to afford a brand new two or three hundred thousand dollar house. But there's, we need to think about solutions that would make sense in the middle there for rent to own. Or like you said, rehab and rental, market rate rental and some of those other things.
Thanks, Brian, for that answer. And to Eric's point, thanks, Eric, for that feedback. He made me think of a couple of things that are positive going on over at our Housing Development Commission. I remember not too long ago, we submitted a proposal, some under some of you know, COVID money, they hope to build some more units. I know that they're undertaking a huge renovation project of the Rainbow Housing. So that's good that those rentals are getting getting worked on because they have, they've been boarded up and there's lots of things. Brian, the other thing that Eric was talking, I was thinking about reaching out. So I guess what I'm really asking, what I'm trying to say is how can we make everybody feel included and how can we make everybody feel like this is something that they could work towards? And one of those things that's generated a lot of interest are the Wolf Houses out there. Well, they're the quarantine housing out by the twelveplex and they're called the Wolves. And those are two-bedroom units and they're really nice. They have an open concept front room. I mean, I could see a small family living there that would still have space to bring, you know, the relatives over for so could we do like a case study or not a case study, maybe like like this house right here, this size and this square footage costs much money. And this is where you'd have to be financially fit to get into something like this. Is that something that's been done or that, I guess I'm just trying to educate and also hire up people that think like, man, I could do that. And we have a lot of single parents living out at Stuntway that built houses and they're single parents. You know, they're, they're young people working towards just building a life for their kids. So I think excellent examples of how it is attainable, but I just don't know if we have a visual that says this person's mortgage is six hundred dollars. You're paying seven fifty for rent over there. Why would you do that? You know, that's what I'm kind of trying to accomplish.
Yep. Yeah, that's a good idea. I think that outreach and education and, you know, kind of an expanded first time home buyer training, it would help people understand better what they're getting into. But like you said, maybe just some pretty straightforward, simple fact sheets about this is the cost. This is what a mortgage would be for a, for a home this size and this cost. And this is how it compares to your income affordability.
Yeah. Because I, I guess what I hear from Eric is that, you know, some rentals are more attractive and we have different, we have people on fixed income. But we also have a lot of hardworking people that that should be thinking of this. So I just don't want people to feel like this isn't for them when we're doing this for them. So so that's my point that I'm beating up to death. So anybody else got any feedback on this?
It's cool.
Cool.
Thank you guys for saying that rent to own. That's what we need. What was presented to us is a great program, probably good for ten, twenty percent of our people here. We have jobs, you know, people want to come home, they would like to come home. We just don't have the housing. We were talking mortgages, you know, that's money going off the reservation. Mom want to be a mom and then, you know, organization or our people's money is going. It could be better if you were here, but then you know, any year two, you make a decision. And you want to grow strong, let's just rent your own. Eighty, seventy, the majority of our population here need this, this rental program. Thank you guys for that.
Absolutely.
Good one, Colleen. Hey, Louis.
The program that works pretty good is that homeownership. And then you can buy your own home. And people living there will take care of them. It's a lot better than the average center. So you can see the homeownership who painted and flowers, a lot of things around them. And children can own and care for their house. We have people that live in the housing unit and don't care for the house. It's not theirs. It belongs to someone else. So they miss freedom. And they get messed up. So it can be rentable. So we need to build on Colleen's idea to develop a program that will have clean houses, new houses for tribal people that can buy them. So we've got to figure out exactly what kind of pattern we would need. You can send to Laura. Thank you.
Thanks, Louis, for sharing that with us. Did I see Rona have her hand up like that?
Thank you, Brian, for all the information that you give us. And, you know, I'm always talking about, you know, educating our community. You know, it's just not about formal education. It's about educating on how to have a successful life, how to, you know, work towards a home. And I know there's more costs and extra costs and I don't know where that would come from when you do those rent to owns, you know. You know, who, who, who actually does these repairs and who pays for, you know, the general maintenance of those? So that's, you know, an extra cost on top of, you know, just the regular mortgage or the payment. So that's something that I look at. And then you talked about outreach. You know, some of the other programs I find out, you know, throughout this year is, you know, it's not the same concept as, you know, if you build it, they will come. People are more comfortable with outreach personally, you know, going to homes, flyers, speaking to them, you know, just holding seminars and saying, come, you know, doesn't, is, is, doesn't seem like it's really working for those that really want, really want it, but they're kind of afraid to go out for it. So I don't know. I'd just like to see a little bit more outreach. You know, the survey was nice, but maybe with the pandemic, it's kind of hard to right now, but, you know, door to door education would be nice. But thanks, thanks for this presentation. It's very informational.
Thanks, Rona. Laura.
I'm going back to the rent to own or homeownership, what we call them. I'm going back to the, I'm not going to give up on that. There is a creative way of making that happen, just like the Housing Commission did. Creating
We lost you, Laura, you're muted or something.
Those guys are paying in and a certain part, you know, if there needs to be something fixed or whatever. I mean, there's a way to be creative and get this done, Brian, and you know that. And in the long term, look at that beautiful tax credit homes up there, up in Thunder Way. Those guys are rent to own or homeownership. And every one of them's homes are really nice because they take care of them because they know they're going to own them. So if they can't get a mortgage, I think that's the second way to go is just either we call it rent to own or homeownership. But we can be creative and, and you know that, Brian. When I beg those are always created.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you, Council, for all the feedback. I, one of the things that I also, that I've heard from the HCCDC Board Discussion and different folks that have talked about housing is that the tribe hasn't done a housing project to that extent. And from what I'm hearing from the council is that we need more rental options. Luckily, there is some, some funds that'll come in from the sale of some of the quarantine housing stock, but that's not going to be until next year. But in the meantime, I think there's things that we could further support our tribal housing program to accomplish these types of projects. And so when we talk about getting creative, we've got an awesome think tank over there with Brian and his team that have done some of these projects. So I guess what I hope and what my ask is, is that we take the council's good ideas and we work with our tribal housing and the technical support of HCCDC to get it done. I would love for this council to get that done. Brian, do you have any feedback on that? I know at the board, we've talked about there's ways that we could accomplish that and that we have three housing, almost four housing entities in town that could lend to that direction. Can you comment on that?
I can. Yeah. I mean, this is really helpful to me because having this, some of these concepts identified as a direction that the council would like to go as grant opportunities and things come up, we can, we can see if we can use those funds in that way to establish rent to own or to do the purchase rehab and reuse model. So, yeah, I'm actually meeting with Irida later this week, so I'll talk to her about some of this stuff too. But I think that's, that's exactly what needs to happen is we need to create additional paths to decent housing and homeownership and all along the whole spectrum of housing, you know, from, from, from the loan contest credit to market rent ownership, all that stuff. So we don't have to be stuck in one model. And we're willing to do whatever. We're not stuck in doing things a certain way. So this is helpful and we will work creatively with partners to come up with solutions we can.
Awesome. Do you need an approval for this market study or was this just a presentation of results?
It's just, it's just an informational at this point.
Well, thank you so much and I would love to be helpful in any way that I can, working with the council to help facilitate that with the tribal housing. We have new leadership in that department. So I think it's a really great time to be having those discussions with new energy, new, you know, motivated ideas for themselves. So all right, well, to be continued on that then.
Right.
Thank you, Brian. Did you want to do your other one now, Brian, rather than wait till the end?
That'd be great if I could. I can make it pretty quick, I think.
Okay.
And that's just a discussion about the homeowner assistance fund dollars that they're the tribe's dollars. It's a specific fund from the Commerce Department for the pandemic response. But they obligated or they enabled, I guess, HCCDC to implement these. The original plan, you might remember, was to put it all into down payment assistance. Then the Commerce decided, Commerce Department decided that wasn't an eligible use. So Alan just got the proposal submitted last week, Alan and Billy, that, that the tribe approved before and it's to help existing homeowners pay down their principal, get a better interest rate on their mortgage. If they have overdue property taxes, they have to pay homeowner's insurance. So it's for existing homeowners and it's just to help them, you know, have a better situation with their, with their financial situation, with their home purchase. So we wrote those plans up, but the Commerce Department is approving them, but when they do, we're going to have to write specific policies for each of those things. And the main point of feedback I wanted from the council is whether you want us to focus this just on tribal members of the reservation or if you want us to focus on any tribal members that are homeowners wherever they're located. And it doesn't have to be all or nothing. You could do something like, we're just going to see what the need is and we're going to focus first on those that are living on the reservation. And then if there's, you know, because it's, it's like five years, it's 1.2 million dollars over five years. So we could do, we could do it in phases where we started on the reservation and that opened up broader. Or we could open it up right at the beginning. So I'm looking for guidance from you guys on what your preference is for this homeowner assistance fund usage that we're going to have access to soon.
Thank you, Brian. Does the council have any initial feedback? I'll go first then. Mom, I when, when there's been this discussion, then it always seems to depend on kind of how much it is, what's it for? And the, it has weighed on, on reservation priorities and it seems like when, when there isn't very much money and we're trying to stretch it, it tends to be only on reservation. But the, the point I want to make is that the pandemic did not stay within our reservation boundaries and it knew no boundaries. And many of our tribal members and homeowners live off the reservation. I'm thinking of one phone call that, um, a message that was relayed to me that we had a tribal member that was in distress and, and they were, they were at the point where they were going to lose their home. And there was nothing that we had that could help them. And we said, well, hold on, you know, there's these dollars coming and it's always hold on and wait, you know? And so I'm hoping that the council may have a feeling that these dollars could benefit some of our tribal members off the reservation as well. And I just want to make that comment that we have gotten phone calls and we have had tribal members in distress over losing their homes due to a variety of reasons during this pandemic. So I open it up for feedback. Laura.
Madam Chair, these funds that, that are funding the half plan, are they, are they, are they based on tribal enrollment numbers or are they based on tribal employment numbers on the reservation?
They're based on tribal enrollment numbers.
Okay. Well, to me, the fairest thing to do with the pot of money that we have is out of our 5,000 enrolled members, how many are adults? And what's the percentage on the res of enrolled adults? And what's the percentage off the res of enrolled adults and split the money by that percentage? So let's say we have 1,200 on the reservation adults and we have 800 off the res. Well, then that percentage would go, go for on the res and then that percentage would go off the res. To me, that would be fair.
Thank you, Laura, for that feedback. Brian, the, the way that this will be allocated, will it be different for every applicant or a standard amount for every applicant?
It's pretty standard the way we wrote it right now. So for instance, like can be up to $20,000 per household for principal reduction. And it could, and it's $2,000 for up or property tax relief. You know, there's a dollar amount type of each type of assistance per household. You know, there's a dollar amount type of each type of assistance per household.
So Lorelei, do you want to, so?
So I guess what I'm saying is, is enrollment could give us the total of our adult enrolled members living on the res. And they could give us the total of our adult enrolled members living off the res. And what that percentage is of the population, that's how we allocate those funds is based on the percentage of on res and off res. To me, that would be fairest and taken in, do you understand what I mean?
Yep, I understand what you mean. I totally get it. But my question would be that, so then if you, if we give it up per percentage based on, you know, who's on and off, does that mean amongst those two pots, then that's amongst those homeowners? Or do they still get the same amount per the plan?
It's going to depend on, to me, it's going to depend on what we wrote and how many applicants we're going to have on res for their percentage or how many applicants we have from off res and for out of their percentage.
I, I understand what you're saying. I was just wondering if that meant that the, it would be prorated based on how, how many are on each group? Because then that would mean that if there's less house homeowners on the res, but even though it's a smaller percentage, they could still get a bigger amount, you know? That's, that's why I was asking you. Like say we had 10 homeowners, even though we have more on the res and it's 100,000, it's million dollars. You know, they'd get more than if it was, that's what I'm saying. Is it cut up by, I'm getting too confused here. Do we want to include on and off?
Um, didn't, Brian, didn't you say we had five years to do this project?
That's right, up to five years.
Up to five years, so. I, I do want the percentage to be fair with how many are on the res and be fair with percentage of our adults off the res. And in that way, we, we've been fair as fair we could be for all our adult enrolled members.
Okay, I, I hear what you're saying, but of that, not every one of those adults will be a homeowner.
Well, Brian's going to get the applications, right?
So we just want to be mindful that everybody gets their fair share based on, okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, so with that, can we, Brian, could you determine what that is? And that we, I guess, as that line depletes, that we, I guess, report back in a year where we're at with that?
I think that would be doable if we have the percentage that we want to allocate the total project budget. This for on off, we'll monitor both of those separate portions of the budget separately and see if one is really underspent and the other is overspent. You know, the tribal council at that time say, go ahead and use that for the other population. Because we want to make sure we use all the funds up in the five years. But yeah, we could definitely do that and track it and give you an update to see how spending in each of those two on and off reservation pots of money are going.
Awesome. Eric.
One thing that we need to also remember and keep in mind, and you know, this is going on right now, that, like I said, the dynamics who are enrolled membership. Some of them can't live on the reservation due to lack of jobs, lack of hiring. You know, they, they have a skill set that's, that we're not looking for at the moment or due to health factors, whatever it might be during this time of this pandemic, however that may go. Well, you know, a significant other may live in the area and they follow them or outside the area. And they end up losing their place, you know, out of a, no fault of their own. You know, the, the land changes hands because the houses normally don't go with the land. And if the land changes hands, the person that gets it doesn't like the, uh, want, want anybody in that house of their, that's now on their, their new newly acquired land, they, they evict them. And then there's a lot of other ways that people get evicted that's out of their control. And especially if they're renting or it's, it's given to them, but the paperwork hasn't been done due to the fact of it being minor, that older family members might come in and take the house from them because they're, they're adults, they're the person that handed it down, that's their relatives. They, they evict the people living in that house. And so I wonder what I'm saying is there's a lot of people in those dynamics that right now, today are, are living just short of the streets with, with families or themselves, however that may be. And that's still something that I think the council needs to look in today as well of how do go about ensuring that we can take care of our enrolled members. And so with you talking about these houses, that it would be good, that would be one good place to start would be our most neediest and poorest enrolled membership to get into as soon as possible. Because that's kind of what we're here for. That's what we're all trying to do at this time is to look out for these individuals. And so just something to keep in mind that as soon as we can get something open, soon as we can get something built, that, that'll be the cardboard box. And so that's what, that's the direction that we have to go because that is happening today as we speak. And so when a plan comes together somehow, some way, that I, I think that would be the first and foremost place we need to start. So with that being said, thank you for, for your words today and, and what you're doing and what you're showing us. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. So do we have a motion to indicate that on and off reservation homeowners are included in the Winnebago Housing Assistance, the half plan? I'll say that. Can someone, if that's the feeling of the council to include on and off reservation, make a motion to that effect? To be included in the half. Lorelei, you make that motion?
Yeah, I'm making the motion on the half plan to include percentage of enrolled adults on the res would, that would be their funds to use, apply for, and the percentage of the enrolled adults off the reservation. And we'll, we'll see how that goes in the next, and Brian can report back like in a year.
Thank you. Rona would like to second that? No, Louis, second. Discussion. Objection to the motion. One objection. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand or say aye. Lorelei, Louis, Eric.
Aye, John.
Holy John, opposed. Abstention. Motion carried 601, motion passed, motion carried. Thank you, Council, to that assisting homeowners. Our next item of business is to approve the Winnebago General Manager Job Description Approval. The tribal council had had a first session and had provided for that to update the Winnebago's General Manager Job Description. And those revisions have been incorporated by the Human Resource Manager, Christian Rogers at Winnebago's. Is there a motion to approve this with those changes, Lorelei?
Madam Chair, I, I still take issue with under, on page two, the second paragraph, it says, "Winnebago's Casino Resort Applies Native American Preferences in Its Hiring Practices." And I'm totally opposed to calling ourselves Native Americans when we are American Indians as recognized in the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution says the US government can enter into treaties with American Indian tribes. It doesn't say treaties with Native Americans. So if this, if Winnebago's Resort applies, it should say American Indian preferences. I don't want us to be calling ourselves Native Americans when in our treaties and in the Constitution, we're American Indians.
Lorelei, would you like to make that motion with that correction?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
With the correction to the language in under environmental, second paragraph. We have a second by Louis, discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried 700. Thank you, Council. Under old business is the COVID mandate. For the tribal members' information over the, I would say, over the past years since this pandemic has been happening, council and many occasions had have discussions about vaccination. And most recently, WCHS has been the first and only entity in our community that has a mandatory vaccination, COVID vaccination policy. And with that, those employees that applied for an exemption may or may not have been honored. And employees had to either separate or resign or comply with the policy to become vaccinated. Many elders love to reach out to different families, veterans, different people involved in different activities. And I would say 99% of those elders said, we need to mandate this vaccination. And so when I'm trying to think of who I should be asking, I guess I'm asking the elders because I think that they're the most vulnerable in, in this illness. And so I'll just say that much, I'm for vaccination. I understand that it, it's a difficult thing to make people do anything. But I think this is a survival decision and we have to look towards every tool to make sure that our people, way of life is preserved and that their health is preserved. So I want to turn it and open up to the council because I know you each have distinct thoughts on this. Eric.
Yes, I would like to say that when it, when it comes to the vaccination. Yeah, I would like to start with all of our tribal workers. And, and you know, I don't want to go against anyone's beliefs or anything like that. But when it comes to our workers, I think that's a good place to start. And I have talked to a few elders myself and they said the same thing. And people think vax, this vaccination's new or whatever, you know? And we've been getting vaccinations from the first day you're born. And annual boosters all the way up until even, even as you go, get older in life, you still, we still get vaccinations, flu vaccinations annually. And so this isn't, isn't anything new. And so the, the, the workers within the boundaries of the tribe, I think, should all be vaccinated. And if they feel that they don't need to, and that's especially goes for the school. You know, I, I hear that our, our school, our teachers are, are, they're choosing not to be vaccinated. And I think that poses a threat to our children, especially when our teachers live out, out of the community in Sioux City, South Sioux City. And they, they, they give it to a child, especially with this new strain. Our healthcare workers, I, I think that they need to be vaccinated as well. Because if they're not vaccinated and they don't live in a community and they're working directly with our paid, our enrolled members in person, that I think that poses a threat. That, that goes for casino, you know? Any, any other tribal organization that, that's within the boundaries of our tribe. I, I believe that we need to all be vaccinated for the, the safety of our tribe. And if they fail to agree with that, you know, I'd hate to go against their, and if it's their religious beliefs that keep them from that, that we're not, we're not stopping them, but we're going to ensure that all, all of our workers within the boundaries of our tribe will be vaccinated. So I'd like to say about that much, thank you.
Thanks, Eric, for sharing your views on that. Would the tribal council like to make further comments? I'll just make a comment from some of the feedback from the email. There's been different entities, whether it be the tribal entity, some of our for-profit entities. And the, the feeling is that it should all be the same. And that if we were going to mandate any type of vaccination, that they would hope that all of our entities would be treated equally. So that was something else I thought emerged from email. But I'm just trying, Lorelei.
Madam Chair, already the Winnebago Conference of Healthcare System as a tribal entity made its own decision through its board to mandate vaccinations. So to me, it, it should be what each of our tribal entities decide with their boards, what they decide to do. And if we're going to make a decision, it would be just for the tribal organization. And remember, our, our acting general manager asked us not to, to do a vaccine mandate for Winnebago's, which is a tribal entity, because he's, he's working very hard to fill all those vacancies over there. And he wouldn't want a vaccine mandate to prevent him from filling those vacancies in the, in Winnebago's. And so if we were going to do one, I would, I would want it to be within the tribal organization, not, I would prefer that we let our tribal entities and their boards make their decisions on what they feel is best. So that's just my thought, but just keeping in mind too that vaccinations do not prevent the spread of this virus. It just helps you not die if you get the COVID. The individual that got the vaccine. But the one impact on our tribal organization that is financial is if our tribal organization employees get our health insurance, the estimate for the cost of being hospitalized for COVID is 20,000 per patient. So our health insurance plan is self-funded. So if five of our employees that refuse to get vaccinated, get the COVID, it could greatly deplete our health insurance benefit. That's the one thing that causes me to want to go ahead and approve that is so that our health insurance is protected in the tribal organization. Thank you.
Thanks, Lorelei, for sharing that with us. You know, all this while, Lorelei, by training is a RN and I really lean towards Lorelei and our public health department for their advice on this. And Lorelei, can you share about the vaccine being approved now?
Oh, yes. I'm, I'm really grateful and I want to acknowledge our WCHS. Because when the pandemic first happened, they decided that they weren't going to go with the states and wait for the states to give us our vaccine allocation. They made a wise decision to go with the Indian Health Service allocation. And that's very fortunate for us because with that, we got the Pfizer vaccine. And remember, when, when the, when us Indians were getting the vaccine, the states, people couldn't get, the states weren't getting their allocations from the federal government. So I'm really grateful to WCHS for going with getting an IHS allocation rather than the state of Nebraska. And secondly, that we got the Pfizer. And the, and the FDA put And the, and the FDA, Food and Drug Administration approved the Pfizer now. Previously, it was emergency use, use authorization. Well, the FDA approved it for fully approved vaccine now. And also the CDC Director wants the frontline workers, hospital workers, schools, casinos, teachers to get this vaccine, the booster now. And also, um, the FDA approved it for people that are sixty-five and older to get the booster. And, uh, if they have underlay, underlying health conditions, that puts them at risk, and that's for, um, I think it's twelve on up, like if they have asthma or diabetes or and, um, so our, our hospital is now opened up for taking appointments for all the people that can get the booster that I just listed. Just calling the public health nursing department and making an appointment, they're having vaccine clinics every every Wednesday, but I know some tribal members that just went down there and got the back, the booster as well. So is that what you want to know, Madam Chair?
Yeah, just that it has since been approved and you were a really hard advocate for wanting to approve vaccination. And so thank you for your your, I guess, advocate so that people felt like it was safe. So, um, any other comments on a mandatory vaccination?
I guess I just say, I am for, I'm for the vaccine. I have to support those that are, I don't know, right now. What I think as, as a hospital board member, I voted no against it because the tribal council has not made that action yet. I, I do think it should be. Um, you know, I say company-wide, all our entities, you know, you know, our casinos, HCI and so on. As you, as we see from last, so look at our numbers today. What I think is from a few emails and what I've seen, we, we have these people not getting vaccinated, but coming to work here. And, and look at our numbers. These little towns that, you know, don't believe in a vaccine are that way. You know, whatever, whatever that way is how they believe. They're not getting vaccinated. And we, we keep that open, you know, we're just going to continue to get these numbers until it does get figured out. I ain't, I ain't no pro, you know, I don't know. It's just what I think about every morning, you know, I listen to the news. For the last however, year and a half, year, what's been going on, it's just always something new, different about this, about COVID. What we're doing, so and so's doing and stuff. I understand Winnebago's situation and support it, but then again, people need to work. There's some people out there that need to work and lo and behold, they might go to work out to Winnebago. People, they love to go out there and they have their coupons and they go out there. You know, these people, what I, what I think again, you know, they don't take precautions, you know, they, they don't wash their hands, you know, they touch their face. And they're touching things, papers and so on. If we're not going to mandate this company-wide, all our entities, and then we need to make exceptions. Exceptions, what's America doing? That's what we're following. That's who we're, we're stepping right behind the American way with this pandemic. Brought it to us, you know, we opened up our, the, the little land we have, our borders, you know. And we have these professionals coming here to work with us. Our educators, you know, business people and stuff. They will continue to bring it here, bring it to our employees and pass it on. Look at our numbers today, I'll say that again. And you look at this couple cases, a couple outbreaks that we have. You know, they're coming from the towns that, you know, these people are not getting vaccinated, they don't believe it. It will deteriorate our, uh, insurance, insurance funds. There, there's got to be something, you know, we can do to, if you, if you don't want to get vaccinated and we don't want to mandate it, then testing weekly. You know? Um, N ninety-five masks, what people are doing. You have to say, there, there must be something going out there for these people that refuse to work. America can't be looking the other way on these people, you know. And they look at an issue with our homeless people, you know, very sick people. You know, it's out there, it's never going to go away. So I, I, I think we need to mandate this. Winnebago Tribe and all its entities. HCI, Winnebago, and our, make some exceptions. And I guess lastly, if we do, if there are some kind of exceptions with these, what these people are doing outside of our boundaries or reservation, then we follow that. You know, you hear they're testing weekly. Is it with their money, the ARCA money, you know, for people to get tested weekly. N ninety-five masks and so on, shields, face shields, gloves and so on. That's what we need to do, and that's what, that's what America's doing. And we can do that now. And with our employees, you know, a few tribal members that work there. I don't know what their status is, but there's, there's a few, you know. And it affects their lives, you know, what they believe in, their freedom. And we chose to do this, it affects their livelihood, their income. You know, we're going to talk about, you know, their rent, their car payment, so on. So I think we need to, you know, mandate this to, to stop this coming. Our people are getting sick, but it's, it's not that, we're not experiencing anything bad anymore. Or saying more what COVID has done to us. We either mandate it company-wide, everybody, all our entities, or we make these exceptions. We can call our folks back at twelve clients. We can, we can do that, I believe.
Louis, Rona.
You know, from the start, I was all for the vaccination mandate, you know, and as things come along and you know, there's so many pros and cons to, you know, this mandate. And I think the pros outweigh all those cons. But before we even vote on anything today, you know, what policy? Do we have a policy that we're going to be going by? Because I don't think we should vote unless we have the solution in front of us first. You know, we're talking about it, it's just discussion at this time, but we need to be prepared to tell our tribal membership, our entities, what we're going to be doing. Are there going to be exemptions? You know, like Coley said, you know, if those that don't want to vaccinate, is there option of weekly COVID testing? Or do we make them wear extra PPE? You know, just different things. Are there going to be options in that? Or is it just strictly, you know, get the vaccination or, you know, move, you know, termination? So I think there just needs to be more discussed. We know what we want. We want the safety of our community and the safety of our tribal membership. And I just hope that those employees that are fortunate enough to work here on our reservation, take that seriously. It's, it's a serious thing. We're a small community. You know, we're, our membership is our heart and our soul. If you're unvaccinated, please, if this is our wishes, do it. You know, or you don't, I don't, we've had so many deaths and we have so many in quarantine and positives now that, um, I am, I am for the vaccination mandate, you know, and I hope something gets written up. And by the next meeting, we can, we can vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rona, for sharing that. And I think there are some lessons learned. We can learn from WCHS and how they approached it and how we would deal with, the, the biggest thing that I'm concerned about are the exemptions and that we would have an equitable process to look at those. And so excellent point, thanks, Rona. Are there any further comments on this discussion?
Who's going to write this policy?
It would most likely probably be HR and, and our CEO. I would, that's, this is an assumption. Esther, do you want to weigh in on that? If there's been any top or preliminary work on researching this?
Um, we can look into it, um, and we have been discussing it. I don't want to make it sound like we haven't. But I think that there's certain aspects of it that we're going to have to reach out to legal on. So, um, we'll get it as far as we're able to get it, but I, I can't guarantee that it's not going to have to go to legal at some point.
And, and we had gotten a memo from General Counsel last month, I believe, on some of those legalities. So I'd be happy to share that with you, but understand to believe so that we would want to make sure our policy is in line with what's what we're legally able to do as employer. So with that, is there a motion to direct our CEO and human resources to work on this for consideration? We have a motion by Louis. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I have a special. You know, we have several CEOs here, I think.
I, I didn't, the last part, Cole, you were saying we have several CEOs. Do you mean within the tribal or you mean across the?
Yeah, company-wide. Memos can be sent to them and they'll find out what we're thinking.
Okay, um, but yeah, we definitely want to make sure our other entities have an awareness. I had mentioned last month, the HCI board meeting also talked about this and they were researching the legalities and what they were going to come up with as a solution. But did you mean, Cole, you wanted everybody to be a part of it or informed? How, how did you want to?
Informed or if they got time to be a part of it. Whatever, whatever discussions, same data.
Entities are able to be a part of that discussion, I think that would go a long way in the long run if, if they're being asked to implement something. Or to concur with what the tribe comes up with. So, um, any further discussion?
I'm sure, I'm, I'm okay with the CEO reaching out to the other entities, but I just want us to be mindful that the tribal council placed a board. The, um, HCI has a board, WCHS has a board, Little Priest Tribal College has a board. The Housing Authority or Housing Commission has a board. And we don't, oh, and, uh, Winnebago Gaming Development Commission has a board. We don't want to usurp what their intentions are for their organization. I, I don't want this to, in any way usurp their right as autonomy with a board in this. It cannot be made clear that we want them involved in the discussion, but we're not, we're not taking away each of their board's ability to, or authority to make the decision for their entity.
Understood. Any further discussion? Objection to the motion. Motion carried seven zero zero. Good. Thank you, council. Oh, let's see, the market analysis committee snapshot, I believe that was covered in number two of new business as well as number two under tribal council items. And so that brings us to the executive session portion of our meeting, I believe.
Madam Chair, there's an email that I got, I could tell on my phone that before we go into the executive session, I want to forward it to the council. You guys, you guys look at that because it, it's documentation as to what we're going to discuss in our executive session. So as soon as I get out of this, I'm going to forward you that email, then I'll get into the executive session. Which Brandon sent a link, thank you.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion.
We have a motion by Eric, do we have a second? Second by Rona. Discussion, council, are we going to come back into this link or will we adjourn out of executive session? Do you anticipate action?
It looks like there's going to be actions, so I'd anticipate action due to the last page of the packet.
Okay. Do you want to come back into this to take those actions or do you want to adjourn from executive session is my question? Because IT will have to preserve this link and not close it out if we come back to this. That's why I'm asking. Okay, well, we've, we've been just ending from executive, so we'll just do that then with no any further discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried seven zero zero. We are in executive session at ten fifty-one AM. I'll see you in the next link.